Good evening, everybody. We are just waiting on one commissioner to get his audio fixed. Wanted to start the meeting so you all wouldn't be concerned. Thanks for your patience as we work through our technical difficulties.
Are we ready to begin? Or are we still waiting?
Um, Clark's still working on it. I think we can go ahead and begin.
Okay. This is Jonathan Miller calling to order the Tuesday, September 1st, 2020 meeting of the City of Rollingwood Utility Commission. The first item is a roll call. I guess we'll just randomly start saying things.
Jonathan, do you want to just read them in order?
Sure. I'll read them in orders how they're listed here, which will be taking attendance, Christopher Meakin.
Here.
Phil Dixon.
Yeah.
Ronald Hasso.
Here.
William Teaton.
Here.
Clark Wilson, I see you are still muted.
No, I'm here on the telephone.
Oh, perfect.
So I cannot get my video or my audio to work, so I don't know what the problem is, but...
All right. Moving on to public comments. Amber, do we have anyone signed up to provide public comments this evening?
We don't. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to make a public comment, if you're participating on your computer, there is a button below to raise your hand. You raise your hand, I'll call on you and unmute you, and then you can unmute yourself. I don't see anybody dialed in on a phone, so I won't go through that spiel. And nobody is raising their hand.
All right.
Jonathan, you're cutting out.
Is that just me that came in and out?
Yes.
Okay, let me try this again. My whole screen froze for a second there. So again, moving on to discussion of possible action on the minutes from the August 4th, 2020 Utility Commission meeting. Does anyone have any comments regarding the minutes, or would they like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Clark Wilson speaking.
John, this is Chris. I wasn't able to attend the interim meeting, so I'm going to stay.
Very well.
I will be to last staying this bill, but I have read the minutes.
I suppose, Ronald, do you want to second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Motion to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. Moving on to the agenda. I sent an email out this morning. I imagine no one has any objection to us swapping these next two items and starting with the utility bill appeal and addressing that prior to moving on to the next item. Does anyone have any objections to doing that?
That's a great idea.
Great. So moving on to the discussion of possible action on the utility bill appeal for 302 Pleasant Drive. Amber, certainly we've seen the information provided in the packet. Is there any other additional content or background that you'd like to provide to us prior to any discussion or to any comments from the resident, from Mr. Cohen?
Sure. So I had, I pulled his most recent water consumption, just in case you were interested in that. And it was at 20,000 gallons for July. So just to include in your conversation. Other than that, I think everything's in the packet. Mr. Cohen is on the line. It looks like he's unmuted himself, so if you have any questions of him, or he can go ahead and present. Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
You know, Amber, and I don't know if we've mentioned this to Mr. Cohen as he's been asking for information on this process, but I think seemingly it's always helpful if you can just, again, provide the framework for which the Utility Commission can actually make changes or make judgments with regard to an appeal, basically what it is that is within our power today, whether yes or no, but just to give some framework around what we can actually do at this meeting.
Sure. I don't want to misquote. Goodness. Let me find that section of the code. I don't want to say anything incorrect. I think Mr. Cohen might be having difficulty with his audio. It looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you if you're speaking. It looks like you're successful at muting yourself and unmuting yourself, but we can't hear you.
Well, perhaps we can work on getting Mr. Cohen to dial in similar to what Clark is doing. In the meantime, I think, again, without, this is not to be misquoted, but understanding, Amber, as you were looking up, and this is for Mr. Cohen's benefit as well, right, that ultimately what we are empowered to do here at the Utility Commission is to determine whether or not we believe that there has been an issue with the billing, a misstatement, an overstatement, incorrect capturing of the actual water usage there, for whatever reason. And if that is the case, that we agree that the bill misrepresents the usage there, that ultimately we can change the rate at which that water is billed, but that ultimately the city needs to recoup the cost of the water, again, based on the meter testing, which showed that the meter tested, I'll say, within tolerances, right, for accuracy, that that was capturing that volume of water that was going through that meter. And that ultimately, if we determine that for whatever reason, that Mr. Cohen shouldn't be held to that particular water usage, that we could agree to reduce the rate at which those gallons were charged, but we can't actually lower the number of gallons that he is charged for. And I think that has to do, you know, that is some amount of our basically wholesale rate plus a small margin on top of that to cover some incidental expenses associated with, again, managing the billing and the water meter reading, et cetera. So...
Well said, Jonathan. I think Mr. Cohen just called in. I'm going to set him as a panelist. But yes, it's section 34-73 appeals in our code, and basically only those appeals that, or only those arguments where there is an alleged error in charges or in the volume of water charged constitute the basis of an appeal.
Right. So I'm appealing based on the amount of water that they say I consumed. Basically, if you look at my bills, in the months prior to this bill of 35,000 gallons, there was nine thousand gallons, three thousand gallons, three thousand gallons, 12,000 gallons, and 4,000 gallons. And in the month after this bill, there was 10,000 gallons. I didn't change anything in my usage for that month. I've been homebound because of the virus ever since these prior bills, when it was nine and three. And I didn't use the sprinklers that month because there was so much rain. As you can see by the bill for the following month was with 9,000. This isn't even close. When I use my sprinklers, like I did last September and December, well, last August and September, I used my sprinklers and it was 30,000 gallons. And when I saw that, I changed my auto sprinkler system to lower the time for each zone. And the next month, it was 20,000 gallons. And so last month, I had to turn the sprinklers on again, and you'll see it's 20,000 gallons again. So basically, I don't know how that happened, but there's some kind of glitch in the reading or something because it's impossible that I used 35,000 gallons in that month. Otherwise, I wouldn't be complaining. I didn't complain it was 30,000 then last September or last October because I had the sprinkler systems on. So when I realized that it was using so much water, I, like I said, I lowered the amount of time in each zone on the sprinkler system, and that brought it down to 20,000. And you can see last month I used my sprinkler system with the same timing on the zones, and it was 20,000 again. So I expect for the rest of the summer, I will have 20,000 a month because I will be using my sprinkler system. But the month in question, it rained like twice a week. So I didn't use my sprinkler system that month or the next month, when it was nine, or the month before, when it was nine. It just doesn't make any sense at all. I don't have an explanation. I'm not an expert on water meters or reading them. I do know that there was a different person reading that month than normally does. I don't know what happened, but this is ridiculous. Something's wrong with this. I request that we go back to my average for when my sprinkler's not being used, which would be 7,000 gallons a month.
And Mr. Cohen, I apologize if you were trying to dial in as we were making discussion, as I was discussing before, what we're actually, and I'll say empowered to do as far as what's written into what the Commission has the ability to do with regard to water appeals. And so while we cannot focus on the number of gallons as a change in your bill, what we can focus on is the rate at which those numbers of gallons is charged, because ultimately, and that is in light of a testing of the water meter. Had the water meter tests come back as inaccurate, we may have had additional cures available to us. But I just think as a deciding body here, what we're allowed to do with respect to an appeals process is to say whether or not we agree with the appeal, and if so, change the rate at which those 35 gallons are charged to you. But ultimately, the city is charged the 35,000 gallons from the City of Austin. And ultimately, what we can do then is change the rate at which you were charged for those, but not change the number of gallons for which you were charged. I just wanted to reemphasize that, that we just don't have the ability to do that.
Whatever you have to do to get my bill down to what it should be, that's what you should be doing. If that means instead of lowering the amount of gallons to what was really used, then you should lower the rate that I was charged for those gallons so that I'm paying what I should be paying.
Well, again, if, and I don't disagree with your concern, but again, what we look at is a meter that tests 98.5% accuracy. We test the meters as part of the process to make sure that the meter isn't the issue. And if that meter is counting that number, the city is paying for those gallons, and ultimately, someone is paying for the water. What we can do, again, is make sure that you aren't paying the rate at which you would if that was your normal consumption, but we are still held to the changes that we can make. And I would just open it up to the rest of the committee if anyone has any questions for Mr. Cohen around, you know, again, just making sure we have any understanding about the usage. I understand the frustration, and it seems like your historical usage would show that you are not a heavy water user. But I, again, open it to the rest of the Commission to provide any opinions or questions.
Mr. Cohen, speaking here. A question, how many people are in your house on average in any period of time?
Two.
So...
Yeah. My kids are all grown and out of the house. This is ridiculous. I'm sorry, this is ridiculous. I have never challenged a water bill before, and I, you know, this is just so absurd that I, that they, whoever's saying I used 35,000 gallons in one month when I didn't use the sprinkler system, I don't care how that happened, it's wrong.
I have one more follow-up question. Is there any construction going on near where you live?
No construction, no leaks. As you can see, by the following month, it was nine. Went back to nine the following month. So, I mean, we didn't fix any leaks. There weren't any leaks. There wasn't any excess water usage of any kind, and the sprinkler wasn't on. So I don't get it. How that could possibly happen? I'm getting screwed here. I'm paying for water I didn't use.
I'm trying to explore all possibilities here and get my own understanding as well. Is there a pool located at the property or not?
No pool. That's just ridiculous.
I have no explanation for it either. In that, I can add a little history. Maybe John remembers this too. Amber might remember. We've had situations where there'd been a spike in one month that could be attributable to an open toilet or a stuck toilet, and those things can get pretty darn moving the meter pretty darn fast. I don't know that that happened here. I don't have any way to support that, but historically, we've seen that.
No, there was no water leak. I mean, if there was, I wouldn't be challenging it. I mean, it's not that I'm poverty-stricken and I can't pay the bill. It's, you know, I'm not trying to cheat anybody or lie or anything like that. It's just totally ridiculous. This is wrong. This amount of water was not used in this property. It couldn't have been, as the month before and the month after show.
Mr. Cohen, do you think it could have been that between May and June, a total of 44,000 gallons were used, and that perhaps in May you used 22,000, and June you used 22,000, or some variation in those two numbers?
No, because the sprinkler wasn't on. If my sprinkler was on, it's usually 20, okay? 22, I wouldn't make a big deal out of that. But the sprinklers weren't on for the months before because it was winter. And then those other three months, if you remember, March, April, and May were very rainy, and I didn't need to use the sprinkler system at all. Now, last month I did, and you'll see it went back to 20. I'm not complaining about that because I did use the sprinkler system, and I know when I do, it's 20,000 a month. You can see the history of that. So I know what happens. It's not like I'm not paying attention and not trying to save water. That's what I do. So I lowered the amount of time on each zone on my sprinkler system to lower my water consumption last September and August, when I realized that the longer zones were causing 30,000 gallons to be used. So I'm paying attention. That's how I know this is ridiculous.
Well, I'm wondering if there was a mystery perhaps in either April or May, and then it caught up in June, where it said there was only 9,000 gallons used, where I'm sure you probably irrigated in June. So, I mean, one possible option for the Commission could be to divide the 44,000 gallons between the two months. And then it would get him, because once they go above, I think it, I can't remember what the cutoff is, if it's 15,000 gallons, you all might know this, but the rates start getting really high. So that might be a way to adjust his bill. He would get a little relief from paying, from spreading, you know, he wouldn't have so much in one month that went over that high tier. Does that make sense?
I mean, whatever you can do. I mean, I don't mind, I don't care what the rate is even, okay? Water is cheap, as far as I'm concerned. What you get for the water you're buying is so important to your life compared to what you pay money for, like bottles of wine and stuff. So, I mean, this is, I mean, water is very reasonable. I just don't want to pay for water I didn't use. And when I'm very careful about how much I use, and I pay close attention to it. So that's what's driving me crazy about this. I don't have an explanation. There was no water leaks. There was no warning toilets. I didn't use my sprinkler system. I know how much water I use depending on what happens. And this is ridiculous. I didn't use as much water that month.
And Mr. Cohen, and I don't doubt anything you're saying right now, that the issue really from our perspective is we don't know what happened at your house, and all we can do is look at what's presented in front of us and speculate as to what did or did not happen, or what may or may not have happened. So we really, our hands typically are tied. We're given authority to make certain adjustments to bills to resolve these, and really, nothing more. And Jonathan was trying to stress that earlier. So I'm not, I have no reason to doubt what you're saying is true, but we do have to fall back on what we are allowed to do and what we aren't allowed to do, and that our hands do get somewhat strong on that point. So I'll defer back to John and the rest of the board. We are trying to not do a side here, but we really are limited on what our power is to resolve these water disputes. And I think we're happy to talk about what that may look like and what we're allowed to do. But I'm not sure if it's going to meet your expectations or not.
Well, you know, I know you can only do what you can do. I don't understand it, but, I mean, someone screwed up. I can't, I don't understand what's going on here. But whatever you can do, I'd be grateful for, and if you can't do it, you know, I'll live through it. But I just don't think it's fair for me to pay for 35,000 gallons when I probably used about 9,000.
Amber, what would the numbers look like if we were able to reallocate between the two months and then drop it down to the wholesale rate plus our administrative fee? What type of relief would that give, Mr. Cohen? Do we know?
I'm sorry, William, please clarify.
Oh, I was saying, like, let's, like, I guess there's two questions. What would, if we did drop the water fee down to kind of our wholesale rate plus the administrative fee, if we use that power we have, what type of relief would that give, Mr. Cohen? And then, I'm not sure if we have this number handy or not, but if we if we could do that as well as reallocate the water usage between those two months to get some of the more, the higher rates, to kind of cut off the applicability of those higher rates, what type of relief would you give? I just don't know what the numbers would look like in those scenarios.
May I ask a point of order? I thought the rule was that if we could drop to wholesale rate plus 10%, if the meter was found to be inaccurate, or there was leaks that were repaired, am I wrong?
That's right.
We otherwise are not allowed to provide any relief?
We can't go down to wholesale plus 10 unless leaks were fixed or the meter was inaccurate.
Right. So that's why I suggested possibly giving him relief via splitting between two months. And he would, he wouldn't get as much relief as paying the wholesale rate, but he would get some relief. And it wouldn't be anything to sneeze at, because 35,000 gallons is quite a bit more expensive than 22.
How far can we go forwards and backwards on that, Amber? I've just done the simple math. If we take the four preceding readings and the 9,000 the following month and the 35, that comes out with about 11,800 gallons a month over a six-month period. Is that within our authority or not?
Um, I would, I think stretching it over six months would be a stretch, just because the other months he's not contesting. So to me, I can, I can, I could justify the 35 divided by two months because at some point it caught up. Unless you wanted to do, you know, over three months, the 35 plus nine plus another nine, we could even that over three months.
Well, those nines will go up as the 35 will decay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. I don't know. I mean, that's just kind of what I was sitting here thinking, that might give him some relief. And we can put a pencil to it.
You know, just do whatever you can do to make this as close to right as it can be. I would appreciate it, and I will definitely pay the bill as soon as I get it. So I'll just wait for the new bill. And if you can do what you, whatever you can do, you know, I'll be happy with it, and you don't have to decide, give the exact numbers right now, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Cohen, thanks for your help. Earlier.
Pardon me?
Mr. Cohen, I just want to clarify something Phil brought up earlier. None of the neighboring properties to your property have any construction on them, correct?
No, that's not correct. The property across the street and the one behind it, they supposedly putting a garage up. It looks like another house, if you want to know the truth. And they've been working on it for a year. And the one right below them had to give them a right to drill into the ground to put a new electric pole up. That took like three weeks of pounding, constant pounding. And I guarantee you, the guy across the street, if he would have known what was going to happen, because we've talked about it, he would have never agreed to it, okay? So, yes, there's been a lot of construction right across the street, drilling and digging and pounding, and we had this, like, rock drill that was going on for like three weeks. So, yes, there was.
Thank you. You know, I don't know if we need to make a motion to just say that, you know, Amber will take a look at looking at a potential way to redistribute some of that usage, and then, you know, can work on providing a revised bill to Mr. Cohen, something in that spirit. And then Amber can just figure out working with Mr. Cohen on that. Does that seem agreeable to everyone? And someone can make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a, I can make a motion that we ask for a recalculation of the three months, including the two surrounding this contested month, and take the average of those. average of those divided among the three months and recalculate the bills for each and figure out what's owed. That make sense?
Seconded.
Uh, motion is second, all in favor?
Yep.
Yep. Bye. Great. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being so creative and doing whatever you can. I do appreciate that. My wife does too.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm going to leave you to the rest of your meeting. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Bye.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is presentation and discussion on update to the wastewater rate study. And Amber, do you have anything that you need to start with prior to, Melissa? Catching us up?
I'm on it.
All right. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Well, thank you so much. Good evening. I hope you all are doing well. Amber, can we pull up the slides and we'll get going on that presentation if possible?
Let me see if I'll be successful in doing that. Oh, no, it wants to restart Firefox. Okay, let me try to pull up Google. You want the presentation first, Melissa?
If that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm one of those silly Mac people, and apparently Mac this site don't play nicely, so, sorry.
Okay, do you see the presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
All righty, we can go to the next slide there. And thank you for your time this evening. What we're, where we're at, last time we met, we talked about a lot of policy issues, we talked some rough numbers. And this time, we've taken your recommendations and directions and are ready to really drill down into the numbers in more detail. So we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. And if you recall, these next couple of slides, we're just reviewing where we were last time. We did identify, if we compare to where our previous revenues have been and what we believe your budgeted expenditures requirements will have to be for next year, we believe we're going to have to see some sort of increase in fees. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk about reserve funds. We did make an edit here. If you recall, last time we met, we talked that we needed about $16,000 a year for a vehicle replacement reserve fund. And then it was pointed out and identified that actually your vehicles do serve public works and water. So we divided that by three, and so instead of 16,000 a year, you need about 5,600 a year to put aside for a vehicle replacement program. Let's go to the next slide. And just again, very quick overviews of where we were on the policy issues. One of the biggest issues we identified was we had about $725,000 a year in wastewater-related debt service that's currently being funded through your general fund. In other words, property taxes are paying for this. Our overall industry best management practice, though, is to try to fund utility rate-related debt service through utility rates. Because of that, going down to the next slide, we wanted to look at that and talk through with you about the equitability. Essentially, what we find is that sometimes somebody's water usage and water consumption may not parallel or be reflective, and in this case wastewater use, in their property taxes or their proration of the overall tax assessment of the city. If the city were to consider to adopt rates or user fees associated that fully recover the debt service for the wastewater, you would alleviate or relieve your general fund from $725,000 a year roughly in debt service expense, thereby either A, freeing up funds to pay for other programs, and/or B, reducing your property taxes. If, to give a gauge, all of that debt was paid for by the utilities, you'd save about 6.6 cents off your property taxes. If we go to the next slide, and I know we're going through this fairly quickly, but I also know we've gone through this a little bit before, so we'll spend more time, I promise, on the other slides. This is just the same table we went over previously. It gives you some examples of real customers in your city, that what their water usage or their wastewater bills look like compared to their property tax bills. Then you can see, if you were to adjust this and go to 100% rate funded, what that might look like. As you can see, there is some, some adjustments there for customers for their valuations. Some, your bigger users of water, wastewater, are going to see big increases in their bills. Those with lower usage are going to see a reduction in their annual bills to the city. Let's go to the next slide then, and briefly, again, I'll give you the brief overview of where we were on the other policy consideration, which is related to your winter averaging. Your current rates, you don't charge a base fee for your residential customers, and they're charged for $7.81 per 1,000 gallons. They're based off of the three lowest months of use over a five-month period. So you look at the five months, you toss out the two lowest months of use to arrive at a three-month winter average. The concern with this, if we go to the next slide... We dropped the two highest months. Yes, you dropped, I apologize, I said that backwards. You are absolutely right. You drop your two highest months, so you end up averaging the three lowest months. Because of that, as you can see on the table I presented here, about 16% of your customer base doesn't get billed for wastewater. If those people are out of town for two or three months in the winter, you can see where you'd arrive at zero. Let's go to the next slide. And last time, I also presented to you some of what your neighboring utilities are doing with regard to winter averaging. Essentially, the city of Austin, the West Travis County PUA, and Lakeway Mudd, all in their own unique ways, basically do the opposite of what you're doing. What you're doing is you're taking five months and you're alleviating the high ones. What the other communities are doing essentially is saying, you know, if you, three out of four of the ones we looked at are essentially saying, if you had zero usage in one month, then that month is disregarded from the analysis. Because of that, we looked at some different options. Last time we met, we talked about some of those options, and this time I've given you some what the bottom line numbers are based off of those options. So let's go to the next slide down, and let's get to your direction from the previous meeting. We basically had three directives. The first was to pursue a transitional implementation plan to slowly include debt service in the recovery of wastewater rates. So we're looking at a little bit at a time. So, and the purpose there is to not cause a rate shock to customers and do it all at once overnight. The second direction we were given was to include a base fee for services, even to residential customers, and to have that have some cost justification. And the third altered, the third piece of direction was to look at different alternatives in considering your winter averaging. Those three things we've put together and will present to you this evening, all of the scenarios I'll present to you do reflect a base fee for residential customers. The scenarios, though, will have, and they'll all include a transitional plan to start including some annual debt service into your rates. Basically, in 2021, we'll include 15% debt service, and then we'll add on 10% every year, or about $75,000 a year, every year through 2025. So at the end of a five-year period, you're recovering 55% of your annual debt service for your use of fees, and thereby in five years, you've relieved that $375,000, $362,000 a year in round figures off of your general fund. So that being said, that's kind of the very quick synopsis of where we've been. So let's dive into the numbers. The three scenarios are a little different in how we do the winter averaging. The first scenario is looking at a five-month winter average. And I apologize, I put in parentheses there, that's status quo, it is not. That's looking at a true average of use over five months. We can certainly go back and give you a kind of an alternative scenario of the way you do it, but right now I've done it just true average over five months. The second option is doing the average over a five-month period, but we're dropping zero use. In other words, if there is a zero for that month, it's not included in the average, one way or the other. So now it becomes a four-month winter average or a three-month. The third scenario does the same thing of the five-month winter average, but we also are dropping, or we're doing a minimum bill of at least 1,000 gallons. At the end, there wasn't a big difference between scenario two and three, but let's talk about those rates in more detail. The next slide outlines those rates, and when we start off with the base fee, we're recommending a base fee starting at just over $13 and increasing to $1,471 over the five-year period. That base fee is basically your utility billing divided by your number of customers, divided by 12 months. So that, in the theory there, and the reason there is, that's what it's costing you to send bills to customers. So even if you're not using anything, even if you're not using any services that are going to the city of Austin, or even using the wastewater infrastructure, the city is in fact incurring a cost related to printing a bill and sending it to you every month and collecting and all of those things that go into utility billing. So the proposal would be to include that as a base fee. So that charge in its entirety is recovered from your base fees every month. We'd recommend increasing your commercial customers by that same $13 a month to recover for their, their billing as well. And so that's that same, we took the $78 and we added the $1,307 to come up with that base fee recommendation. The next slide are your volumetric rates, recommending charging the same volumetric rate to residential as well as commercial customers. So it's this very similar to what your rate structure is now, in terms of you have a different base charge for residential versus commercial, and then everybody pays the same volumetric charge for the gallonage that they use. In the first year, we're recommending leaving the gallonage charge alone. So that means in year one, everybody's only difference in their bill is the $1,307 per month for their base fee. After that, and that between your base fee, for residential and commercial customers, that allows you to recover that 15% debt service. And then after that, you would see a change in the volumetric rates each year for the different scenarios. It's slightly different. All of them are going to recover the same revenue requirements. The difference is just how you recover it. So what's happening here is that comparing scenario one versus scenarios two and three, as I mentioned before, not a huge difference there, but what's happening and where your big difference is, is coming in because of you are selling less water from first of scenario one. These scenarios, I have to emphasize, are very different than if we continued with your status quo. If we continued with your status quo, we would have an even higher increase in the volumetric charge. And that's just simple algebra. The cost that we're recovering is the same, it's the billing units or the number of gallons I'm dividing it by that changes. Your current status quo is going to arrive at the highest volumetric rate. These alternatives attempt to be more in line with what you see in the industry, which is this realization of recognizing that customers with zero use, if they're an active connection, they are either out of town, or in most cases, out of town or under construction. And sometimes you may have that single person who isn't using a lot, but it's very, very rare for a residential customer to use less than 1,000 gallons. And so each of these alternatives, while they're slightly different, and there's a few nuances there, are effectively correcting for that, so that you're accounting for how customers are actually using their water. Under this scenario, you'd still do the tossing the highest months, but you're also tossing the zero months. That being said, how these impact customers, if we can go to the next slide, you will see an average bill analysis. What you're seeing here is that in general, in the first year, everybody's bill increases by that $13 we just talked about. In years starting 2022 and going forward, their bills will adjust more each year based off of taking on that additional debt service. The biggest difference, though, is how and who it affects customers. What you will see is that customers who are those zero-use customers are no longer going to get a free ride. So their zero months are going to be thrown out, and you're going to see some consumption show up there, so if they're using two or 3,000 gallons in the other months. So their zero months are thrown out, their highest months are thrown out. Typically, what you'll find is most customers fall into one category or the other. A lot of times, a customer with zero use, they're just going to, their zeros are going to fall out. If it's a customer under construction, that will fall out. Or a new customer, they won't have an average. They don't have an average, you give them the citywide average for that year. And that would also be for your builders. For customers who fall into the opposite category of high-use customers or customers who may be irrigating throughout those months, your same policy is going to apply, where those high months are going to drop out. And so this is just trying to do both, where we're trying to get rid of our zero-use customers and at the same time, give customers a benefit of the doubt where they may have been irrigating into some of those months. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I want to thank you, it seems very thorough and addressed the concerns, at least that I had, that people weren't paying for sewer, and the rest of us were paying for, and the lot has value because there is a hookup to it, even if there isn't sewer, sewage going that people weren't paying for sewer and the rest of us were paying for, and the lot has value because there is a hookup to it, even if there isn't sewer sewage going through it, that, you know, that adds value to that piece of land. So I'm in favor of a base, and I'm in favor of the base covering the billing. The billing seemed high to me, that $16 to give me my bill, but I assume that include meter reading and things?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it includes all the customer service and everything in that bill that's customer, in your line item, your budgetary line item, that's for customer service and billing.
Well, then it seems low to me. So of the scenarios, I'm kind of leaning towards your having a base rate of 1,000 gallons. I know that's just a proxy for something else, you could just call it a number or anything. But I think that people should pay for having a sewer connection, or if they're off, then there should be, there should be a reconnection. Sorry, I just stepped on you, John.
No, no problem. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood the difference between the three scenarios and their actual impact. Because in one sense, it looked, you know, they're all have different rates at which they increase cost to this customer, you know, this potential 8,000 gallon use customer. But ultimately, what I'm trying to figure out is scenario one looks like we will be, the folks that are currently not paying as much as we think they should will be having to start putting some money into the system. Scenario two does that same, but at a lesser extent, and scenario three is somewhere in between. Is that how I'm reading that correctly?
Probably a very good synopsis, yes, sir.
Okay. And so if we're thinking about making changes in the way that they impact folks, we can say scenario one would have the greatest impact on that segment of the population that's currently not paying as much into the system. And we know, you know, generally, you know, who those folks are. Scenario two starts to take that into consideration and saying, we need to have some contribution, but maybe not as much as scenario one. And then scenario three says, hey, again, this might be somewhere in between from how impactful it is. And so I think it's easier for me just to think about that in terms of what those mean from a five-month winter average decision to the one where we are dropping the zeros, which again is somewhere on the lower end. And then at the 1,000 gallon minimum average is kind of that in-between impact on those customers.
Right.
Thank you.
Melissa, was I correct in seeing a slide that said that 87 customers had zero as usage?
In 2019, yes, sir. In 2019, there were 87 customers with zero use.
That's, yeah, that's what I'd like to address.
Well, I will say that a big number of those are homes under construction. So it's not that there's somebody living in a house and not paying for their sewer. It's that there's not a house there or not a house being lived in. And the other issue is the way we, the way we drop numbers right now. If somebody uses 990 gallons one month and 1,010 gallons the next month, they would get a zero the first month and a two the next month. But if we then go dropping the zero, that's not an accurate reflection of their water usage. And there are people who use low volumes of water, and it's actual usage. So I do not think that dropping the zeros is an appropriate way to adjust because there are a number of those, especially our older residents, where that is, or a single person and living in a home, that is a valid representation of their usage because we only charge it when it rolls over to a full 1,000 gallons. And you don't lose that the next month. You know, it catches up and you get charged for all of that. But if we start dropping the zeros, then you're artificially increasing their usage and not accurately reflecting the average that they are, that they are using.
After our last meeting, I asked Amber for some numbers on homes with only one person in them. And in Rollingwood, apparently 92% of the houses have either two, three, four, or five, and 40 houses have either over five or under two. So I think we're kind of managing into the exceptions and not into the general population.
And where did she get that number?
She emailed it to me, I don't know if she got it.
I pulled it from the data from the comprehensive plan.
So the comprehensive plan was 270 responses out of 500 houses. Over 500 houses. So that's not a complete, that's not a complete assessment. And I would guess that probably a lot of the people that were single-family homes, the older residents, didn't fill that out.
We don't know that.
Well, right, we don't know it either way. So I'm saying that's not valid data to be basing that judgment on.
Well, it was statistically significant representative sample of the community. So, I mean.
But on, but on numbers, but you don't know which, which homes in the neighborhood participated in that study.
Right, but it gives you, it gives you an idea of what the number of people living in the houses are for the majority, or at least.
For half, for half of the homes.
Could we pull a more accurate representation once we get the 2020 census data?
We could.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just saying that dropping the zeros is not, is not an accurate way to adjust that winter average. I've looked at the winter average usage in infinite detail for a number of years, and there are real zero readings that are valid. There are also a lot of zero readings that are because there's nobody living there and we have not, I don't think yet addressed the issue of construction billing because those people can just cancel their water service and they would be paying nothing. And by putting all of the debt service on the rates, then they're not even paying for it in their property tax anymore either. So the homes that are under construction for years then would be paying nothing for the sewer. And that, to me, is one of the big things that we needed to be addressing, which this, to me, is going backwards.
Sure. Well, let me address a couple of things. There's always going to be a possibility when you're averaging and your system, your billing system and your metering system rounds to thousands. The same could be said if we do. You're always going to have that, that issue and weakness. That is absolutely true. I will, though, want to give you an idea of the magnitude of what this does. Your, the data we're looking at is 2019, and that winter average was 5,200 gallons, was your winter average from 2019 for citywide. This was what your billing operator gave me of what your citywide annual average was. That, that's the method of taking five months and dropping the two highest. If you just took those five months, you would be looking at 7,300 gallons. If you took those same five months, dropped the zeros, it goes to 8,560 gallons. Scenario three was 7,380 gallons, and then the last one was 8,000 gallons. The point is, by doing both, five months and dropping the two highest and not dropping the zeros, you're, you're reducing your billing units dramatically of how you bill. It is, unfortunately, because we do not meter wastewater and we're doing an averaging, so we're doing our best estimates of use. And we're also doing our best estimates using even, you're not even metering to the gallon on your, your water side. So you're always going to have those issues. Likewise, the 1,000 gallon scenario, if I use 990 gallons this month, I get billed zero for my consumption on water or even where your tiered consumption, that's where you get more sensitive on the water side, is if it's the, you know, the 999, whatever the thousands is, in your first tier. But next month, then that gets billed at a higher volumetric rate next month. So you are always going to have those issues. It is truly a policy consideration of where to, where that balance is. As I said before, the rates I gave you, that scenario one is we're looking at a five-month winter average. Your volumetric rate would be higher because if we reduce those billing units down and did the dropping of the zeros, it's certainly a policy consideration for you all. In terms of addressing the builders, what we, what, and I apologize, I did not go over that more thoroughly. The $13 recovers the cost of billing them. And then you can certainly, as you're taking on that debt, char, add to the builders their pro-rata percent share of that debt. So the first year, the builders accounts, and you would need to make sure your billing system can do this. And operationally, you would have a third category. So you'd have residential customers, commercial customers, in a builder account. Once it's a builder account, they would pay the $13 plus their pro-rata share of the debt. So in year one, if it's 15% of the debt, we would divide that out by the total amount of connection, residential connections plus the LUEs to come up with that standby charge for builders. And I apologize, I did not cover that earlier, Councilman Hudson. But that's how I would propose you address your builders to handle that issue. In terms of the dropping the zeros issue, you know, like I said, we can certainly run it all directions there.
Jonathan, I've got a hand raised from Amy Patillo.
Okay.
Amy, you're unmuted.
Thank you, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Great. Well, I really look forward to hearing the recommendations of the Utility Commission and have enjoyed the presentation and find y'all's conversations to be so thoughtful and helpful. The one thing I was going to mention, as I heard discussion about the potentially the, the people who have, who are, who are, we have a single person living in a home, maybe one month, they have less than 1,000, some other months they have. So then they would have a zero reading and a 2,000 reading. So somehow it would be okay for them not to be paying or. Well, I'm just phrasing it, Sarah, how I heard it. I'm also dropping my son off at the pool and trying to manage a lot of other things. So I may not be stating it exactly the way that you would like it stated, but this is the way I'm stating it during my public comment. So my comment to the commission is that we are a household of three and very frequently, we use two gallons and other months we use three. And so if we're going to get into this whole calculation of dropping, of not dropping zeros because it's a single person, then I would suggest that we would then have to get into calculating the number of people per household and then looking at whether more than one gallon is being used per person in that household in order to make it all equitable. And that's just, that's just a comment I have from our household as I've heard this whole discussion about a single person in a household somehow it being different than a family of three that's using less than 1,000 gallons per person. So that's, that's my only comment. Y'all can take it however you want to, but I just thought I'd throw that in there, that that's our household and that's, that's something I found interesting in all this discussion.
Thank you for that, appreciate the additional insight. You know, again, I think that what we're, what we're looking for here is either an equitable or what would I like to consider more a reasonable approach to addressing the fact that we have a gap in revenue. We have a cost of trying to maintain this utility system. And there are currently, we have a system in place where we don't think we're getting sufficient revenue from folks that are utilizing the system. And so how do we, how do we adjust the current billing to capture some additional revenue for usage that is absolutely happening at some level or another, where there, but there's no billing for that usage. And so I agree with the base rate, as Chris mentioned earlier, and I agree with some additional change to the monthly winter average. Whether frankly, it's dropping the zeros or going to a minimum amount, I just would like to see some action where we're saying there's going to be charges across the board and everyone who's here, regardless of what they are using, will ultimately paying on a monthly basis throughout the year for some portion of that utility system that is being used by everyone. So I guess I don't, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other with regard to which scenario we use. However, one scenario has a more extreme impact on others than, than the other ones do. And so it may be seeming to pick the one in the middle, which has a more gradual increase in costs, but still gets us to the same goal over time. Which is ultimately, I think, we will likely be revisiting this before we get to year five. Hopefully, it is because we have electric meters and we're all understanding exactly what's going through our systems at that point. Although, again, I understand it's not, we're not metering wastewater, but we'll have better controls on, on the amount of water everyone is using as, as per our, our initial agenda item with, with the appeals where no one knows where this water is going. So, so again, I don't know if it's a matter of us to try to pick one today as much as I think it might be, everyone has the information in front of them and can take some time to digest it. I don't know what the urgency is in order for us to send something to city council today. If that's something that we would like to do, is make a recommendation for sending one of these scenarios to city council to review. Or if we would like more time to review it prior to doing that, I am open to either. Phil.
Either can be done tonight.
Thank you.
So I apologize if I'll be asking that question. Otherwise, I would have raised this question there and then. Melissa, a question for you. Do any of the other utilities within the vicinity do a prepay option?
No, not to my knowledge.
The reason I ask is, we obviously have an issue with the debt. We need to service and figure out how we can lower that. And we've borrowed money as a Rollingwood to pay for that debt somewhere. And I would imagine there are certain homes in this neighborhood that have the ability to prepay forward and average use for the previous 12 months and the forward 12 months and to get some interest on that money rather than staying in a checking account paying zero and splitting that cost with the city, say if the city's doing 3% and they're getting 0%, you know, one and a half percent, everybody wins, it's a win-win situation. Just coming up with a bit of financial engineering. Secondly, I think that anybody who uses water needs to be paid, pay for that use of water. And you could do averages, you could do, you know, dropping this and that. At the end of the day, an average is an average. If you do it over the whole five months, my point, my view is you do it over a whole five months of the winter and then you stop any potential gaming that goes on in the system if that does happen. And if you don't use zero in one month and five in another, it's averaged out and you can't really argue with that. That's all I had to say is, you know, if there is an option that we could look at a prepay to facilitate some of this, I think it would help the, help the city get a reduced debt rate cost and we would be able to generate some income to lower the rates of water at the same time.
So I think that is something you could tack on to your recommendation since the contract is really between the city council and.
Since the contract is really between the city council and Melissa, they would have to be the ones who would go back and direct her to possibly explore some of those numbers. So if that's something the commissioners feel like they want to recommend to the council, they can. But just so you know, that, that's kind of how the process is. And in whatever recommendation y'all make, either tonight or maybe next month, it will, all the scenarios will be presented to the city council for their consideration. They'll be aware of your recommendation and then they'll be able to make the ultimate decision.
I'd like to jump in on that as well. As far as prepay options, the biggest thing there is to see if you have a billing system that can accommodate that. Typically, when I've seen, you know, prepay, it's, okay, you're going to pay for X amount of use a month. So as an example, we have a property where we have a propane tank filled. And the way that works for a prepay option is they look at our historical use, they average it out. And that one, we can pay all upfront for a reduced rate. We can pay an average amount also for a reduced rate. Or we can pay for, of course, a higher rate on a month-to-month basis. And where that gets into various scenarios, et cetera, comes down to really, from the water perspective side, is whether or not your system could accommodate doing, for example, the averaging where people pay the same every month. Or if you're doing a, we're going to give you a discount if you pay twelve months today. Your billing system would need to be able to handle that from a programming perspective. So I would definitely recommend that would be the first. If you wanted to explore an alter, option like that, is to start by seeing what your billing company system can do for you. Because I'd hate to see you spend time studying, analyzing, and determining something and finding out your software can't do it.
Hey, it'll take me five minutes on Excel.
Well, I love it, I love it.
Clark and Ronald, what are y'all thoughts?
Well, this is Clark speaking. I just have a thought about the amount of debt service that should be in the utility bills, considering that when we built our sewer system, no one was required to connect to it. So people, there might be some people remaining on septic tanks. But I think all of those people and everybody in the community had their property values enhanced by the presence of the sewer system. So it's not out of line to have the general revenue support the debt service to a large extent, in my opinion.
Thank you, Clark, I'll, I'll chime in. I, I really like the idea of scenario three. I think it sort of splits the difference. And it seems the most, there's going to be no perfect equitable solution. That doesn't exist in life. And I think that one is the closest to achieving the goals that we're trying to get to. I personally think we're not putting enough of the debt service on the base fee. But I like the idea of charging at least the minimum of our billing to, you know, every customer, so there isn't any overhead that we're just eating every month. So I'm a big fan of the, the, and scenario three going forward. But I don't have a strong preference between scenario three and scenario one, as they seem to both reach our goals.
John, I'm happy to vote on a recommendation. I'm also happy to table this for a month and let everybody chew on the numbers. And I, I'm leaning more towards scenario three. But I'm, I'm open to any of the three.
I was simply leaning that way as well, given the overall impact kind of sitting between the others. You know, again, as Amber mentioned, this ultimately goes to city council for discussion. They will understand our recommendation. But I can't imagine there won't be a significant amount of discussion around this point. We're kind of regardless of where we, where we stand. Although I think it'd be clear as to why we chose that. I think we all agree on the commission around the need for a base rate. And we all understand the need for some adjustments where there is, again, more usage added to, to our billing. And so, and capturing more, more usage. So if someone would like to just make a motion with, if, if they, if everyone feels comfortable, we can certainly make a motion to recommend one of the scenarios. It seems like scenario three has gained at least support from a number of commission members. And, and we can go from there. If there's anyone who is strongly opposed to it, we can certainly table that for another discussion.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go with scenario three as our recommendation.
I'd be happy to second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of a motion to recommend scenario three, which includes a base rate as well as a minimum rate for the monthly average to be sent to the city council as the recommendation from the Utility Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, anyone opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Motion passes.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I will be adding to the draft report, the recommendation on the builders. I apologize, Councilman Hudson, I did not make that clear in there. I will add that to that base, to the draft report. And if you all have any additional questions or need anything whatsoever, just let us know. And we're happy to assist.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You all have a great day.
Thanks, everybody.
We can adjourn the meeting unless we have to set a date for next time, or are we just going to adjourn? No, we don't need to set a date, we're ready to go, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.
Is anyone still there? Can I confirm on that last vote if anyone's just joining via audio? And voted? I want to make sure I catch the vote. Is, is William?
William's no longer here.
But Clark is here.
And he's still here and we got a yes vote, correct?
I'm still here, yes.
Okay, great, just wanted to confirm.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, bye.